Interesting to have so many meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of December 17th is now called to order. I would like to, before we get into the items on the agenda, make a recognition. So I see David Barth has joined us at the back of the room. So I would like to announce that David was recently appointed Development Services Director. So I'm glad you joined us this evening. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
I will go over the process this evening. So we will call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff, then the applicant and/or their representative. Then we will open the public hearing and hear from those in favor, and then those in opposition of the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both the staff, applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond and provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will then be closed, and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll start with the first item on the public hearing agenda, and that is a short-term rental, STR 0182.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Diana Hood. I'm the Associate Planner. As stated, this item is a request for a license to operate a short-term rental at the property addressed as 811 North Star Drive. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's near the intersection of McIlroy and Perkins, just inside Star Drive. The Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals, as you know. The hearing is to be held similar to a specific use permit, except there is no staff report or presentation. As a reminder, the city cannot enforce private restrictions or covenants, but can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any. Thank you. At this time, if the applicant is available, if they would come forward? Hi. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Moritz, 811 North Star Drive.
So we had tabled this item from the previous meeting because we would like to hear kind of what your intent is about the properties. And I believe there's two next to each other. The next item on the agenda is the other one, so we'll take them separately.
Okay.
But if you want to talk about them both, that would be fine. I think part of the, we did have a letter. There was a letter that was written. Have you had a chance to see the letter that was, had concerns?
Nope.
Okay. If you want to just kind of talk a little bit about your plans for the property?
Sure. My wife and I bought the both houses. We'll talk about the first one first. Refurbished them, and our plan is to have them as Airbnb, a VRBO, for people coming to visit Stillwater. They're specifically close to the OSU campus, so people for games, or people bringing their families in or whatever, would have a place to stay.
Okay. The letter that came to the city clerk, I'll just read off. They are owners of the home whose backyard abuts to both of the properties. They have serious concerns about both the properties becoming short-term rentals. Concerns are based on high potential for both properties to become party houses. They have concerns that their pets would be subject to exuberant strangers tossing things into their yard, and that the, in fact, two closely neighboring homes are intended as short-term rentals, and it exacerbates the likelihood of large crowds developing from larger groups running both houses for events. Possibility that these homes would become disruptive in the quiet cul-de-sac. So if you could maybe talk about some of, do you have some rules you would set aside for these properties?
Yes, well, we have a maximum of six in either, in either house. We approve the applicants as they come through. If they are going on, that's how it's going to be set up. And as far as I know, I mean, I've stayed in Airbnbs all over the country with my wife. We travel through all the states, and we've never tossed anything in anybody else's backyard, or had anything to do with anybody else's pets or anything like that. The houses that are behind us, that's who the letter came from, they're elevated. I mean, the fences is from our ground is like 10 feet plus tall. They won't, can't even, we can't even see them. So I don't really know. The house next to us is a rental. The house across the street's a rental. All, three of the houses on the block are all rentals. And so I don't know if they've had bad experiences with the other people, what's going on, but we haven't. We live there. I mean, I live at 811. We moved in there since August. It's quiet as can be. I mean, the other rental people that are there, they're all quiet, too. And so I'm not really sure why they decided to write the letter.
So are you planning to stay living at that current address and then just rent it out as?
Yes.
Okay.
So we were going to stay at 811, and then 801 will be a rental that we'll take care of as it's there. We have another one over on Preston as well, but that's irrelevant here. That's a full-time rental, not a short-term rental. And so they will live at 811, and then when there's a big event at the school or whatever that there's a need for, it'll, 811 will be rented, and we'll go elsewhere. That's the intention. And hopefully, we'll end up buying more houses in Stillwater.
Do you have any parties or policies for no parties, quiet hours, anything like that?
Yes, there's definitely no parties. We do have installing Ring cameras that, so we can see who's coming in and out on the outside of the homes. And there are quiet hours after 10:00 p.m., and on the weekends, we go at midnight for quiet hours.
Is there a minimum night stay? Number of nights?
Two. We just don't want to be changing sheets that often, stuff like that, for one night.
Significant parking or enough parking for the amount of guests that you're hosting?
Yeah, 811 has, you can easily get four vehicles in the driveway, plus there's the entire curb out front that's available to them. 801, which will be the next one we're talking about, has enough for three vehicles in the lot, and then all curb access out front as well. And there's, across the street is an open lot, and there's nobody there that goes through the church, and so there's all that side of the street as well that people can park on.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item to please come forward. Seeing then, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Do we have one? Oh, thank you. No, that was just, that was him. Yep, that was the applicant, the only one who signed up for that one. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present us with our alternatives.
All right. Your alternatives for this item are to approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or to deny.
Thank you.
Given that the applicant actually lives in 811, is going to be living next door, I think that's kind of best-case scenario for taking care of and managing a STR. So with that, I will motion to approve STR as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is another short-term rental, and this is STR 0183.
Oh, 182.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right, 183, sorry. We just did 182. Okay. As mentioned, this request is for the property directly to the north, addressed as 801 North Star Drive. Here's an area map of the subject property. This is the corner lot for that area. Once again, there is no staff report. And are there any questions for staff?
No questions? Thank you. So would you come forward again and just, yeah, we'll do the process to the book today. Name and address for the record.
It's 801, I'm Tim Moritz, and the property is 801 North Star. I live at 811 North Star, right next door.
So a question I would ask, so we can get it in the minutes, is, is this, this STR, is it going to be handled in the same manner in which we just spoke about 811?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from other commissioners? No? Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing then, I will ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this item. Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present our alternatives.
The same as before, your alternatives for this item are to approve for, approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or deny.
Thank you, Diana.
Motion to approve STR as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is another short-term rental. This is 0186.
As mentioned, this is another request for a short-term rental license, number 0186, for the property addressed as 1822 East Crayler Avenue. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is on Crayler Street, in that residential subdivision, near the intersection of Crayler and Carnley. As stated before, the public hearing is to be held similar to a specific use permit. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or representative to come forward. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Abby Maycomber. 800 East Hall of Fame Avenue is where I live.
Okay. All right. And I think we did receive a letter, and I believe it's from your father?
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, it was, it was pretty extensive, what your dad put in here, Mr. Maycomber put in here, for all of the criteria as to how the, how the property's going to be managed. It's quite thorough.
He's a perfectionist.
I can see that.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you'll be the one actually in town managing the property?
Yes, sir. I'm no more than a five-minute drive from the house, so I go there, I take out the trash of everything, I make sure the trash cans are where they need to be, I grab the mail, and I can mail everything to my dad, or I can handle it myself. So I am fully involved in this, as much as he is.
And I think maybe just to get it in the minute, some of the items that we typically ask for, I believe that there's a no-party rule, quiet time is at 10 o'clock. I believe there's like a two-night minimum.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I read, read all of this, just, we read it yesterday. Yeah, parking, I believe for the, the parking issue is that there's parking, ample parking in the driveway, and they can use the driveway or the garage to-
Yes, ma'am.
-cover everyone that could sleep there, discouraging any parking on the street. Anything I'm missing, gentlemen, from what was in the letter?
Pretty thorough.
Yeah. Do you have any, have any questions?
I mean, as you said, the letter answered all of the typical things that I like to discuss, and I like to know that there is somebody here in town that'll be able to respond in case there is an issue. So that's appreciated on my part. I think I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing then, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present our alternatives.
As a reminder, your alternatives for this item are to approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or deny the application.
I'd make a motion to approve the application. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a map amendment, MA 24-14, and we shall hear from staff.
Yes, all right. Good evening, Commissioners. Jacqueline Porter, City Planner. Hey, I'm bringing this item back to you. You tabled it from last week, or not last week, last Planning Commission. Felt like last week. It is, I'll go over this again. This is a request by the applicant for a map amendment to rezone the property, address as 3118 through 3124 East Fourth Avenue from RSS to RTM. Here's the area map of the subject property. It has three frontages on Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, and Mockingbird Lane. Here's an area of the subject property. To the south is Saddle Creek Apartments, and that's kind of the only major thing in this aerial. Here's a street view, looking south off of Third Street. So, so property is located in the northeast area of Stillwater with three frontages. Subject property is zoned RSS with a single multifamily structure, which is a quadplex with a frontage, which is frontaged on Fourth Avenue, and the parking is access off of South Mockingbird Lane. To the north is RSS as well, and RTM is located to the south, and then RT is to the southwest of the subject property, with again, another RTM to, to the south, what? Matt, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm right. I'm rereading the line again. So they're requesting a rezonance RTM to put the area to allow for two new duplex structures north of the existing quadplex. You tabled this item last time to ask the applicant some questions about parking. There was a conceptual plan that was added to the packet that you could see, that the applicant provided. They will be coming off similar to what the one that is, the quadplex that is facing off of Fourth. They will be coming off of, through the back, off of Mockingbird Lane. Oh, I forgot the future land use map. Future land use map calls for high density in this area, with similar around it with commercial on Sixth. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't see any. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward if they're available.
Hello, how are you? Plane rider, 2520 South Durham Court, Stillwater, 74074.
So I believe a couple weeks ago, when we had the last Planning Commission meeting, there were some questions that came up. I think the one that I recall kind of being probably the most, the biggest stumbling block was really wanting to know how vehicles were going to access and-
Yes, ma'am.
-how that would work. So the diagram that you provided answers that question, and it wouldn't be adding more driveways to Third?
Right, right. And she had made a comment that was off of Mockingbird. There's a, we have, we own the property to the south. There's that alleyway, if you want to call that. It's an unnamed street.
Drive access.
Exactly, yeah. We'll, we'll tie the driveways into that drive access.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item.
Hi, good evening. Ashley Hernandez Torres, 3110 East Third Avenue. I just wanted to say thank you so much for providing that clarification. I have a six-year-old son that likes to play in the street. Obviously, there's a lot of other kids that live in that area as well, as do in his property that he already has built. And so that was my concern, is just, obviously, anytime there's a new construction that's coming about, a residential neighborhood with kids around, so, and also was just worried about, you know, adding more cars and to our, you know, going through in another entrance to, to Third. And so I do appreciate that clarification. And the only other question that I had, which I'm not sure if they have at this time, is when construction timeline might be, if there's a projection for that yet or not. Other than that, I don't have any other concerns.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have an opportunity here in a little bit to ask the applicant to come back forward. I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this Seeing no one else, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this item? Seeing no one, I'll ask the applicant to come back, and if you could answer the question on your timeframe.
To answer that question, construction timeline, yesterday. We'd like to start as soon as possible. So ideally, we'd like to have groundwork start as soon as we get permission from you guys and permits approved, and thumbs up there, we'll start immediately, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Do you have another question?
Just if there is an idea of how long you might have, of how long construction would be, once it started.
I like the start date and an end date.
Yes.
It's fine, yeah. That's okay.
Well, you never know with construction. We'd like to think about six months at the fastest, a year at the slowest, so.
And at this point, we will close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
All right. So your findings tonight are, the Land Development Code allows for rezoning of land via map amendments. Two-family and multifamily. RTM is located to the south of the subject property, and the comprehensive plan calls for high-density residential uses in this area. So your alternatives tonight are, accept findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, or find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impact of the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the City Council approve the map amendment, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, and table the request to a certain date.
I would say that it's an appropriate use for that lot, so I would motion to accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is a specific use permit, SUP 24-04. We shall hear from staff.
As mentioned, this is a request for a specific use permit for the property addressed as 1307 North Husband Street. This is a request to operate a religious institution or religious use in the RSS and RT zoning. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is directly east of the Stillwater High School. It's, it has frontage off of both North Husband Street and off of North Main. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, where you can see the, the high school and the football stadium and all that. Here's a street view of the subject property. This is looking, oh no, I forgot the direction.
East.
East, thank you. Looking east off of North Husband Street. Here's the zoning map. This property has two zonings. It is bisected in the middle. The west half of the property is zoned RSS for small lot, single family. The east half is zoned RT for two-family. There's similar, the RSS zoning is located to the north and a little to the south. RT is located to the south of that eastern half, with public to the west, where the high school is located. And to the east, we have, the northeast, excuse me, is zoned RSL for large lot, single family. And to the southeast, past the RT zoning, is located, there's RTM zoning for two-family and multifamily.
Diana, real quick?
Yes.
Can you go back? The, the property along Husband that is to the south, can you, is that also?
The, the orange with the dots?
No, between the, the one that's, has no shading?
The one that has no-
Between the orange and the pink?
Orange, pink. In between the RSS pud and the, the CG, just past Hartman?
I think so. No, oh, no, no, no. It, like, in between the orange and like, and the property, the, the subject lot, fronting on?
Oh, yes, that's the continuation of RSS.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Here is the future land use map. The future land use map was adopted at the time of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, predicting desired uses for the surrounding area. As you can see, public is located to the west, where the high school is located. The entire surrounding area was projected to be a low-density use, with high-density residential to the southeast, and commercial to the south, near the intersection of Husband I believe the applicant is here. Are there, oh, I should mention, in your report, it does say that the K-Life Ministry was operating prior to approval. That was the report that we had received. However, code enforcement was sent out to investigate, and they didn't find any evidence of such activity. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
So just, just curious, code enforcement that went out?
Yes.
And they didn't find any evidence, yet there's a yard sign that says that it's conducting business there?
Yes. So the, the, oh, how, sorry.
There's, there's, there's an advertisement by way of yard sign?
Yes, they have yard signs. I believe their intent was to move from their previous location to this location, so they've put up signs in anticipation of being located there. But when code enforcement did their investigation, they did not find any evidence of actually-
So they didn't go there while the meeting was occurring?
Correct.
Okay.
It's based on what we have been observing from code enforcement and from our building inspectors that have been out and about. There is ongoing construction at, I believe, the shed behind the house, and I believe there was some interior remodeling work being done at the house.
Did that have a permit on it?
Yes. Yes.
Did the original construction have a permit?
For the original building?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't recall when the building was-
But a permit was pulled for the interior renovation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I think those are my questions for staff. All right. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. At this time, if the applicant's available?
I'm Matt Clark, 5325 West Trenton Court, Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74074. I am one-half of the applicant. We've also asked K-Life Ministries to step on behalf of- We've also asked K-Life Ministries to step on behalf of the application process to formally speak with us. So I'll be speaking and providing some context as a property owner, and then I'll ask Angie Ward to come up and speak as the applicant for the ministry side of the religious use permit. As I mentioned, Matt Clark, my wife is Maria, and we have three daughters. One of those currently attends the high school. We have Maddie who attends the junior high, and Charlotte who attends Westwood Elementary. We've lived in Stillwater, Stillwater for the past 10 years. My wife nor I grew up here, nor did we attend OSU. We came here for a job, as I mentioned, just about 10 years ago. I've not worked for a local Stillwater company for the past six years. However, we have chosen to make Stillwater our local community. The primary reason is because it felt a lot like home for my wife Maria, who grew up in Emporia, Kansas. As you can imagine, a college town, relatively small, single school. It felt like home. We appreciate the opportunity to seek the planning commission and ultimately, hopefully, the council's approval for our specialist permit. Throughout this meeting, I am sure that you're going to hear comments in opposition of our permit request for a number of reasons. Some of those are going to be building codes, noise, traffic flow, parking, safety, property values, a number of items. Some of those I'm going to address, as I mentioned, as a property owner, and then some of those Angie is going to speak on behalf of the applicant and the operator. When Maria and I first saw that 130 Husband, 1307 North Husband was going to be listed, we were actually surprised. We were shocked that we saw a property sitting in the middle of town, 1.8 acres, that was listed for such a low property value. It didn't take us long to realize why. During our, our first home viewing, I opened the front door and encountered a squatter that was running out of the property, leaving behind their clothes, left behind their technology devices, in addition to leaving behind money. Upon further inspection, we encountered homeless shelters that had been erected in the middle of the property. And during a second viewing of the property, we personally witnessed high school students that would walk onto the property during break and use the shed as a hiding spot to smoke and partake in other activities during school. Finally, we realized that the overgrown and rotten trees and the unmanaged shed were creating a safety concern, not only for those that would be on the property, but also those that were inhabiting neighboring homes and had cars near the property. Prior to revitalizing, yeah, so prior to revitalizing many of the neighbors that will oppose the permit had no idea what was actually happening. I think the comment "out of sight and out of mind" was very common that we had heard. Most of them did not understand what was happening inside the home after dark, nor did they understand what was happening on the property during hours. We recognize that over the last four to five months, there's been a tremendous amount of noise. There's been an enormous amount of change, and ultimately, everyone has seen the erection of a brand-new building. All of this change naturally creates anxiety and a questioning of whether the noise will continue, how the property is going to be used, researching whether everything has been done legally, and ultimately questioning what is the impact of what we are doing going to have on probably their largest investment in their life, which is their home. In light of the challenges that Maria and I faced during our inspection of the property prior to purchase, we were drawn to a vision where this property could be revitalized and used to serve the local community, specifically the next generation of pioneers. 1307 North Husband's first deed dates back to 1892. This property, we believe, is the 11th-deeded property in the state of Oklahoma. It is a centerpiece of our state, a centerpiece of our community, and we expect to carry that legacy much longer into the future. As property owners of 1307 North Husband, Maria and I are committed to ensuring that this property remains that centerpiece. We held an open house in October for the local neighbors as an opportunity for them to meet us, as well as K-Life Ministries. We felt that it was very important early on for them to understand we want and will always have an open-door policy. During that meeting, we presented plans on the property, the ministry, and we invited neighbors to develop this together. We heard a number of questions during that meeting, most of which are familiar, given that K-Life has operated in prior properties in the city for a number of years. The concerns expressed during that meeting and over the past few months are extremely valid, and we understand them. From a remodel and a building perspective, the renovation completed inside and outside the home has all been done within the legal process that is required. In addition, the materials that we have used and will always use are intended to first and foremost ensure safety for anybody that is involved, as well as maximize property value. From a traffic flow perspective, we will be closing off access from the Red Bud Main Street side of the property and focus public access only from, from Husband Street. In fact, from the photos that you saw, we have already widened the access off of Husband Street to ensure that we provide clear sightlines for anybody entering or exiting the property. From a trafficless, traffic flow standpoint, it was a huge priority for us based on initial comments from the community to make sure that Husband was the only place that we had entrance and exit to the property. From a parking perspective, we have already developed the far west side off of Husband to clear parking as needed. Not only do we believe that this is going to provide a safe environment, but we also believe that it will eliminate the need to park on streets. I think one of the main concerns is what kind of activities are going to happen and how much traffic is going to be happening. I think the majority of the events that are scheduled or will be scheduled will not have a large number of cars expected to be parked on the property itself. From a safety perspective, we have cleared every rotten tree. We plan to repair every fallen fence board, and we plan to install additional fencing to ensure that we have control of on and off property. From a beautification perspective, we plan to replant landscaping on the east side of the property and create a community sitting area with a dog-walking station. From a landlord perspective, K-Life Ministries has been in operation for over a decade, most recently operating a building off of Husband and 10th Street, a busy neighborhood corner. Witnessing how they manage the building as tenants, traffic flow, parking on such a busy street alongside neighbors, and the focus they had on child safety provides Maria and I a very strong sense of confidence that they understand the importance of being a good neighbor to everyone that they operate around. Maria and I are extremely confident that this is a great tenant, both for us, but also for the community. To close, it is not lost on Maria and I that a large amount of dirt has been moved, that the noise everyone has experienced has been real, and that what people used to see when they walked the property will no longer be what it was. Change is hard, and uncertainty creates fear. However, I'm fully confident that Maria and I will follow all legal processes required by the city, the county, or the state, and will serve as a property owner that enhances the experience of the community and serves as an active member of the neighborhood. Before I ask Angie to come up as a co-applicant, I'm welcome to answer any questions that you may have.
Will you live there? Is that what I understood?
We will not live there. There is an executive director of the K-Life Ministry that will be inhabiting the top floor of the main house as it exists today, full-time. We felt like it was really important to have somebody living on the property to make sure that it had eyes being watched 24/7.
What age does K-Life cover? I should know.
Yeah, Angie will talk a little bit more about what K-Life does, but K-Life runs from your younger elementary age all the way up to high school, but it is predominantly ministered by college kids. And so majority of the oversight is done by college volunteers that are serving the community.
So were all the improvements done mainly on the home structure, or have you also been doing improvements on the metal barn structure on the east side of the property?
Yeah, so most of the renovations or the improvements were done in the main house to bring it back to a point where somebody could live in it. Electrical was out of code. Gas was out of code, and so we went through the process of bringing those back up to a place where it was safe to operate. The building is a new addition, so we actually tore down the old structure. It was, we were not able to revitalize it. Our primary intention was to rehab that building, but upon further inspection, it was just not going to be possible. So we have worked through the proper permitting process for that building, and every aspect of everything we've done there has been as a part of the city requirements. The building itself has been erected in the RT zone area.
So as you see it moving forward, if this SUP were granted, what are the planned uses then for the, I'll call it the residence first? So living quarters upstairs, and then what is the downstairs to be?
Yeah, so the downstairs has been and will continue to be used for sort of small group Bible studies, after-school study hours, small gatherings of, I would probably say, less than 15. So we have revitalized the main floor to sort of serve as a coffee shop, a kind of, that's a good way to think about it. A centralized gathering place that has predominantly open space that can use for multipurpose, but with smaller gatherings. The larger building will, of course, be used for more of the larger activities. As you can imagine, everyone's going to question, is this going to turn into a full-time daycare facility? No. K-Life does not operate every day of the week, from 8:00 to, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. K-Life has a very structured and public-accessed calendar for what activities are going to be held. Majority of those activities that would involve a larger group are going to take place less than three nights during the week, and most of those will happen on a monthly basis, but there are some that happen on a, on a regular cadence. Those are all, again, public access. We've communicated those to the neighbors as a part of our open house to provide some idea of when we do expect traffic to be higher and/or activity to be larger on the property.
So you're, you're saying that, I just, I just want to understand if I've, if I'm hearing all this correctly, because that's a lot of information. So I'm hearing seven days a week?
No.
Not seven days a week?
Not seven days a week. Yeah, K-Life, well, I guess I would say this. I cannot speak to whether someone will want to have a college, a high school student over for lunch on a Monday, or a Tuesday, or a Wednesday, or a Thursday. In terms of regularly scheduled, planned activities, that is not seven days a week. That is more like four days a week.
And, and you said from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
No, that is, it does not operate 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, what hour, what, what hours?
Yep, majority of the activities that take place for K-Life happen before school as a small group Bible study, so they take place from 7:30 to 8:30. That is anywhere from two days a week to, could be five days a week. Different age groups operate at different, different frequency and at different locations. Other activities that may take place would be three nights a week. More often than not, it would just be two nights, but on occasion, it could be a third night. Most of those would happen during the week. Very little activity happens on the weekend.
So the evening hours, what would the typical evening hours be?
Typical evening hours are from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There is an occasional event that happens after 7:00, but it is very rare. Obviously, we hope that there's going to be a future beyond the activities we have today, such as a Friday after football or after basketball activity. Those are things that would operate inside of normal noise ordinance hours, where we would ensure that we were minimizing any after-hours activities.
So you've talked about the residence, you've talked a little bit about the larger outbuilding. The outbuilding, do you know, do you know the occupancy that it is, that it is rated for, so like by code enforced occupancy for that building?
I do have a general contractor that may be able to speak to that. I do not know. It's a 3,200-square-foot building, so it's, it's fairly large. We do also have two 10-by-16-foot garage doors that are there to ensure that we don't ever have a, a sort of in-and-out sort of access issue. We've also followed any sort of rating related to fire or others to make sure that we're minimizing any need to have an urgent rush in or out of the building. But it's a sizable structure that we would never expect to exceed capacity on.
So when you, when you had that building built, how, how, and I'm assuming, because you've said?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm understanding, there was a permit for that building. How was that building permitted?
That building is permitted as a additional residential sort of ADU, not an actual inhabited, but it's just essentially a, a metal building, a barn, a shed, addition to a residential property.
So you, so you do understand that if you intend to use this, if this SUP comes forward and you do intend to use this, then you've changed the use of occupancy from necessary use for residential to basically an assembly occupancy, which is a much higher number of people that can be in it, and so your life safety concerns go up quite drastically. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I think we're aware of making sure that anything that we're going to have to adhere to is done. I think for us, we, again, we don't expect to have any volume of foot traffic that would exceed anything that would be allowed for the building that, as it was intended and what we're doing today.
Okay, so today, how many people are you having over there today?
Today, we don't have anybody in the big building because it's not, it's not completed.
Okay, so at your, at your current location?
Mm-hmm.
Down on Husband, what's your, what's your average number of large gathering?
Yeah, I think the largest maximum we would probably ever have is probably 40.
Forty? And do you know how that relates in size to this building that you've got under construction?
Yeah, the current building that we operate today is, usable space is probably half the size that we are operating in, the 3,200 square feet. It's a little bit of a different property, right, because it was built and constructed differently? I don't know what the exact functional square footage would be listed as on a county assessor. It also had a home that was attached to it, right? So the, the property that we currently have today is fairly similar, just obviously a little bit different residential versus commercial zoning. But the property we have today is larger than, or we are building is larger than what we are inhabiting or had inhabited in the past. The ministry had, I wouldn't say, you know, we.
So let me make sure, what is the largest anticipated crowd you would have, not only in the building, but in the yard, in the whole property?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I can't really predict how many people would want to come to a Friday night after, you know, after football gathering for a period of time. I think the largest I ever expect to probably come would be 50 to 60. It's hard for me to imagine that we're going to get 30 high school kids, 20 parents. It's really hard for me to imagine that. So we would love if this property ended up getting maximum capacity across a 1.8 acres and all the different homes and properties we have. I don't know what that would be. I don't know in terms of the volume that it would take to make this property feel like it was being overran. In terms of planned activities, I do not expect anything that would exceed 40 to 50 in a building or on the property, but could we get to a point where we had 50 or 60 or 70? That would be a great problem to have to manage. So if I had to answer today, that, that would be the largest.
I think those are my questions for the moment. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Did you have another individual that wanted to speak and, and on the applicant's side?
Yeah, we had K-Life. Was going to sort of have a representative. Yep, thanks.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add about the application? Okay, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
So my name is Angie Ward. I live at 1511 South Mansfield Drive, and I would just clarify that for more than 15 years, K-Life has existed in Stillwater with a mission to create discipleship and fellowship opportunities for students in second through 12th grade. There are currently 75 Oklahoma State students who serve as leaders and mentors in various capacities through the ministry. Each leader is vetted, interviewed, and background-checked. K-Life reaches students through small group Bible studies that happen before school and then weekly club events that would happen in that larger building when it is completed in the afternoon or early evening hours. So small group Bible study is typically 10 to 12 students led by three to four college students. They're held typically between 7:00 and 7:30 a.m., and many take place in homes or coffee shops through the community, but there are a few groups who have decided to make the property at 1307 North Husband their regular meeting place for those Bible studies. Club events are designed with fellowship in mind, so there is a time and a place at those club events for students to play games, connect, to laugh with their friends, where their cellphones get put away, and for just a little while, kids get to actually act like kids. These events take place right now on a schedule of three separate times based on age per week. So on Tuesdays, those would be planned to happen in the coming semester. They have not been happening this past semester, but in the coming semester, they would be planned for after-school for an hour and a half on Mondays, oh, excuse me, on Tuesdays. And then on Monday and Thursday evenings, based on age group, there is a. And then on Monday and Thursday evenings, based on age group, there is a club event from seven to eight thirty PM. Those events are typically attended by about thirty students. We understand that noise, traffic, and parking are important concerns for neighbors and they're all matters that we've considered with intention and our planning for how the programming and the function of the ministry is carried out. Any increase in traffic honestly would be minimal and thoughtfully managed. It is a seven thirty, seven to seven thirty in the morning is going to bring a small amount of, a, a small flow of cars to the property, but most of the street is still asleep or getting ready for work. And honestly, most of the people in those cars are moms still hoping, you don't know, they're wearing their house shoes. They're just trying to drop their kiddo off so that they can be on with their day. Evening events conclude by eight thirty PM. They all happen on school nights. We're mindful of that for our students, but also for our neighbors. College leaders safely escort students to their cars that are waiting. To limit any disruptions, traffic has all been directed to the driveway that's been extended at thirteen oh seven North Husband, minimizing any street congestion for people trying to turn in there, but also eliminating any passing cars or the need for a pickup line at the North Main access. All of our events are limited in size. With most students being dropped off and picked up rather than driving themselves, we don't anticipate significant parking concerns, but do have access to the public parking at the high school if need be for an event. K Life has a website and social media accounts that are well-maintained and updated that provide a current schedule of events every single week and every single month. In terms of noise, we've been intentional with how the building's been insulated. We've included soft finishes inside with the flooring to help minimize sound. And we've scheduled all of our events to take place outside of those community quiet hours. But to be honest, from time to time, I hope you hear a little bit. I hope in the same way that neighbors in this area start to hear the high school band practicing in the summer mornings and it queues them in, that the start of school is right around the corner, or when they hear the roar of a Friday night crowd coming from the stadium and it signals a pioneer touchdown, I hope every once in a while, they actually do get to hear the sounds of kids laughing and playing. I hope that they get to hear what it sounds like for kids to cheer for each other in a game of kickball or touch football in the yard. And if they're lucky enough to even get to hear the sound of kids worshiping in that building. K Life met previously at two oh eight West Tenth, tucked on the edge of a neighborhood. And at the end of that lease, we looked for a new location. We considered and explored several commercial properties. Unfortunately, none were financially feasible for our locally funded ministry, but more importantly, none of them provided a safe outdoor space that thirteen oh seven North Husband offers to our students. This property feels like a true gift, a place where students can throw a ball outside or sit on a blanket or in a hammock under a tree. The proximity to the high school is amazing. A place where they could build meaningful connections under the care and supervision of their college mentors. K Life is more than a gathering place. It's a life-changing ministry that impacts students and strengthens our community. For Oklahoma State students, it's an opportunity to invest deeply in the lives of younger generations caring for and inspiring second graders through twelfth graders. For families like mine, it's been transformative, changing our family, our eighth grade daughter, and countless others. I firmly believe that K Life has the power to bring positive lasting change, not just to this neighborhood, but to our community as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
I have a question for you. You mentioned seventy-five college volunteers and there's been conversation about one individual staying permanently on or full-time on the property.
Yes, ma'am.
What other adults, so older than a college student? What other adult supervision is there for, or mentoring is there for the college volunteers?
So K Life employs two full-time staff members. There is a director and a women's director. And they lead and mentor and pastor that group of college leaders. K Life also has a board of directors who help oversee and support that staff in any of those items.
So then this, kind of the staff meetings, if you will, for the volunteers and the mentors and then for the board, where do those individ, where do those meetings occur?
Currently, they happen at the, at the house property in that downstairs space at thirteen oh seven North Husband.
And how often do they meet?
We meet monthly.
Monthly?
Yes.
Both groups?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, yep, one more?
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure, you said K Life's been around fifteen years?
Just over, yes, sir.
Because I'm thinking, didn't they used to meet way back when on Main Street between six and seven?
Yes.
Yes, they did. My kids were there.
Yeah, same.
Anything else? Thank you. So this time we'd open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. And I do have a list, so, and I'm not sure who's, who is in favor and who is in opposition. So if you're in favor, would you come forward and we'll just work through the list? Yes, sir. Do you have a question about process? Do you have a question about the process this evening?
No, I don't have any questions. I thought you said you want somebody to speak.
Yes, sir, and I, I saw this gentleman over here. What is, what is your name?
My wife says I can't hear her.
What is, what is your name, sir? What is your name, sir?
I'm Clark.
All right, Mr. Clark, would you like to come forward? Are you speaking in favor? If you're speaking in opposition, I'll call you later. Mr. Clark, it's okay. With the gentleman who wants to speak in favor.
I haven't heard a word in here tonight.
Yeah, would you please come forward? And when you get the microphone, maybe if you could move it a little bit closer to your voice, to your.
How's that?
Is that?
Better?
Better for me.
Good. Ron, I wish, if I could talk this way, I would. Is that better?
Okay.
If I'm yelling, I'm sorry.
Also, we will be implementing a three-minute per person because it does look like we have a quite a large crowd tonight and to keep you here, not past your bedtimes, we'll have a timer on the board above. Yes.
And tell me your name again, sir.
Sorry, due to the size of the ground.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Chris Stockton, thirty-four oh two West Twenty-Ninth. I don't want to overstay my welcome tonight.
Go ahead and start.
Okay. So I have served for the last year as the president of the board for K Life. I've been active on the board for the last three and a half years. I think Angie and Matt did a very good job of, of speaking to the ministry and, and those types of things. So I wanted to provide just a different kind of outlet specifically tied to the community. So I attended Oklahoma State over a decade ago. As mentioned, Stillwater K Life has been around for around fifteen years now. So I was part of, of some of the initial aspects of that. So thirteen years ago, I was one of the college leaders that they spoke about. So my sophomore year, junior year, senior year at the location on Main, I had the opportunity to serve as a leader. And so about three or four years ago, moving back to Stillwater, given the opportunity to do that, one of the first things we absolutely, our family got involved in was getting involved in K Life, which was to the building where it is now, if y'all didn't pick up from the address, it's across from the Stone Cloud Brewery where the antique mall is now. So we've seen it at every stage, been actively involved for thirteen years or so. And one of the things I want to highlight, another aspect of what I do is soon to be the president of United Way in town. The only reason I mention that is everyone's hopefully probably aware of United Way. A lot of the agencies we work with consistently are talking about the mental health epidemic we live in and just how we're trying to get the young people in mental health and just do as much as we can for the community. And so I cannot advocate enough how positive for the city of Stillwater, having a property across from the high school where students were going over and doing negative things, we'll say, that now they have the opportunity to interact with college students, right? We mentioned seventy-five of them who are now have a pull to the city of Stillwater. We're always looking for ways to get Oklahoma State students active in Stillwater. This is a way. And having an outlet for elementary school students and middle school students and high school students to have someone to go to. We cannot express how many of these students have reached out to our staff members around different abuse or different problems that they're having at home, addressing some of those concerns to, again, our background check leaders, those types of things. And so from a community perspective, the just absolute importance of having something like this for the future of Stillwater across the street is just such a positive aspect, in my opinion, for the city of Stillwater. And again, from a, I would just advocate, right, just being another citizen in this town, if it wasn't clear enough, blocking off, we will literally be fencing off the back section. So when we talk about traffic and parking, I mean, we're across from the high school. There literally is abundant traffic and abundant parking and there's football games. I mean, we're in an area that is heavily trafficked and heavily noise-related anyway. We don't look to add anything to that, but just given the location where we're at, I'm very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Yes, that's fine. Yeah, if you could, if you come together, it's going to be one three-minute. If you each want three minutes, then you could come separately, okay?
That's fine.
All right, and name?
My name is Ronald Inselman. Live at twelve ten, actually, we live at twelve ten North Main Street, here in, here in town, obviously. So that little piece of green that you see that's surrounded by all that red, that's us. We live, they are to the west of us and to the south of our property where we live. I'm quite thankful that the Clarks purchased the property next to us. It was in ill repair. It was horribly overgrown, completely unmaintained. I work from home. I've worked from home since the, since COVID, since twenty nineteen. Got a nice big bay window out the backyard and I got to see that horrible sight every single day. Not only that, but kids that would come over during lunch on a piece of our property that happens not to be fenced off, there's a concrete slab out there, smoking and eating lunch, leaving their trash, and drug paraphernalia for me to clean up. They were very inconsiderate and I'm glad that they don't do that anymore. So the fact that the purchase of this property has improved drastically, I mean, it's just, it's just nice not to have all the dead trees and all the over-undergrowth and everything that was there. It, it's just, it's peaceful. I don't have to worry about anybody living in a home that might be dangerous or not. I don't know, but I know they're not there now. That's what I know. And I'm glad that they're gone. I'm glad that the Clark, somebody else could have bought it and, and cleared it off too, but they did. They committed to this and, and we are very, very thankful. The old trees, one of them fell down, actually damaged our fence, which didn't ever get repaired by the previous owner. They didn't seem to care enough. And I know the Clarks are different kind of people. I know they're people that care about the community, they care about the property, and they care about their neighbors. They've expressed that clearly to us, I feel like, and, and I am certainly one hundred percent in support of what they're doing. Not just the property, but everything that they are doing is a good thing for this community, in my opinion. You know, is it noisy? Of course it's noisy. They're building. I mean, if somebody would have built a brand-new house next to us, it would have been noisy. There would have been dirt work. There would have been the same activities that are happening today. And doesn't bother me. It doesn't keep me from working. It doesn't keep me from sleeping. They're there during normal hours, doing what they do, normal construction. And so I don't see an issue. They haven't increased anything. Matter of fact, I'll say this, I've heard a few kids out in the backyard playing, laughing. It sounds good, you know? I mean, I know this isn't about feeling, it's about facts, but it still feels good to see those kids back there, hear their laughter and hear the joy that they have, you know, from gathering and being in a safe place, and I know it's safe. They've done great things with the home. They're doing absolutely fantastic things with the property, and I just see that continuing. Thank you. I hope you will consider this for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Hello again, Blaine Ryder, twenty-five twenty South Durham Court, Stillwater, seven four zero seven four. I am the general contractor who is responsible for the noise that we've experienced so far, and I apologize for that. I will tell you, it's just standard construction equipment, skid steers, a couple of concrete trucks. We had a telehandler to lift up some of the bigger pieces of the metal building we put up. You had asked a question, I believe, Mrs. Phillips, about people, number of people we could put in that building. By code, by fire code, based on the square footage, we can put four hundred and fifty-seven people in it. We, we obviously will never do that. This is built for people like, you know, I'm a dad of three kids who are all involved in K Life. When my eleven-year-old boy goes over there, he'll play dodgeball inside. You know, they'll play tag and all the other fun games that they play inside that building. So how it's built, it's a metal building. We insulated the interior walls with spray foam insulation and then we've covered the walls with three-quarters OSB, so it's a fun house. It's just meant to be rough housed in and where we'll cover the, the floor will be covered in artificial astroturf, very soft to protect the kids from hitting the concrete and stuff like that. Got a couple bathrooms inside of it and that's it. It's just a big fun house. Doesn't even have heat and air. It's just built to be a, a fun place for the kids to go inside. And if it's raining or they need to play inside, got big bay doors. We can open up two sixteen-foot garage doors, so thirty-two feet of opening to get in and out, plus a normal walk-through door. So lots of easy access in and out. But what it looks like for me as a dad, you know, I drop my kids off about six fifty-five in the morning. My son, for example, my eleven-year-old, I drop him off at six fifty-five, they go inside, they have a, I don't know, twenty-minute Bible study. Then I was sent Carter, who is our, the guy who lives in the house, the, the director. Carter sent me a video the other day of the boys, after they finished their Bible study, they went out in the front yard and played football about seven thirty in the morning. They were playing a football game in the front yard and, you know, it was just neat seeing that. Obviously, not, not loud at all. I don't think we got any, any noise complaints from that. They've done that multiple times and I know that they, they absolutely love doing that. I don't think it caused any problems at all. As time goes on, you know, we'll hopefully play some wiffle ball games over there. We'll play some, some outdoor tags, some capture the flag, some things like that. And that's, that's what it looks like for me as a dad. That's what my kids do. Bible study, rough house, run around, have a good time, play dodgeball, laugh, be silly, be kids. It's great. Very much in favor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor?
My name is Carter Robertson. I live at thirteen oh seven North Husband Street. I currently am the chapter director of Stillwater K Life and am in charge of all the leader planning, but currently spend a hundred percent of my time at the property itself. And so I just want to communicate, like, my priority in this ministry is a hundred percent the safety of our kids. Like, I want them to have a fun time. I want ministry to be done. But like my eyes for it in the property and everything like that is how the kids play in safety and that everything goes in accordance to K Life HQ policies, which K Life has been around for fifty years as well. If you can look at their, their, a national kind of thing, there's locations in Denver, there's like four locations in Oklahoma. And so this is not a new venture and that we're constantly receiving training that we can also equip our college leaders and like, I'm passionate for discipleship, not just for the youth, but also college ministers. And so we're actively engaging in conversation of like, how do you have director's eyes? Like, how do you make sure and watch out for safety for kids yourself? Like, how do we maintain just safety for the property? Because the last thing I want is like, I'm responsible for all the kids that enter this property. And also I want to be courteous of our neighbors itself. Like, I don't want it to be an obstruction. Like, I want to work with them and talk with them. Like, my front door is always open if there's a problem. To talk with the neighbors, I would love to develop a great relationship with them and have through that open house meeting a month ago, like, I shook hands with all of them. And so I just want to say that, like, my priority is a hundred percent the safety of our students. And as someone, my story as someone, I, not to get emotional side, but I grew up with alcoholic parents and, and was saved through Bardersville K Life and a location there. And it took a college leader seeking me out and just inviting me to their home and ministering and doing those small group studies. And through that, I mean, that's what makes me passionate about doing this program full-time is how do I affect kids in the same manner that a college student affected me through K Life ministry? And so just want to say that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing no one, I'll ask, we have quite a long list here. Mr. Clark, I believe you said you would like to come forward and speak? Yeah, so I'm asking for people who'd like to speak in opposition. Well, I, well, let's go for it.
I'm Ron Clark. I live at one oh two Randolph Court. And I fully support, you know, what K Life is trying to do. I think it's, it's, it's super. I guess I'm a little upset with how things have happened. You know, this, this building. Can, can I show you a picture? May I show you?
If you have a picture, you can give it to our clerk right here.
No, I, I want them to see it right now.
Well, you can give it to her for. Well, you can give it to her first, and then we can pass it through.
But, you know, in the beginning here, they showed, you know, the setting, the house, you know, this picture was not in that setting. This house, this, this building just, you know, it just appeared out there. And I think that, you know, how would you like something like this in your neighborhood, right across the street from you? I mean, I can stand there and pitch a softball, you know, and hit the building. That's how close it is, just across the street. And it just, it just appeared. We had no idea that this, what was going on. And they're still under construction. I don't know how they got it approved. Does the city have some way of approving this prior to their construction? I don't know how they got the permission from the city to construct this building, especially in a zoned area, a single-family. And that's what I'm upset about. I think that, you know, they have damaged some of the houses, the people out there, because, well, for instance, my son came up about two weeks, or about a week ago, and we go out and greet him, you know, and help him carry in his luggage and that kind of stuff. And he looks across the street and he said, "Dad, what is that?" And it's this building. He said, "Do you realize that's probably damaged the value of your house? You'll probably have to discount your house if and when you ever want to sell it." "I don't want to sell it right now, but I might in the future." And he said, "If I was with a realtor and I was riding around, and he took me up there and said, 'Let's get out and look at this house,' I'd say, 'No. See that building over there? I don't even want to go in.'"
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
"I'm not wasting your time and I'm not wasting my time."
Yeah, your time is up, but thank you for completing the idea. I wanted you to get the idea out.
You get the idea. That's what I'm upset about, this.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just gonna start down the list. Is there a Barbara Miller that would like to speak?
I'm Barbara Miller. I live at 101 Randolph Court, directly opposite this new construction. I'm just going to give you a timeline, because it was asked, how did they get permission to put this up in the first place? We are not speaking to the value of K Life. We are speaking to the zoning problem. On early September, around the 10th, my friend Joan, my neighbor, had been down the block because all the trees had been torn down, and we didn't know what exactly was happening. So, around the 15th, both of us tried, we contacted Trish Ranson, we didn't get much. She was telling us to contact the city manager. We talked to, the first person I spoke to said, "Well, it's within the building size, so it's okay." And I said, "Well, what about the zoning?" And she didn't have anything to add to that. So then, we reconnected with each other, and we found Brady Moore. So I talked to Brady Moore at length, and he explained that they own the land, and we were first concerned with the size, but then they have to file a special use permit because it's single-family housing. And he was going to go talk to Mr. Clark about it. And a couple weeks went by, and I hadn't heard anything. And then, I had to go out of town for a month, and by now, I got back, it was November 15th. So, two months had gone by, a huge amount of construction had been already completed on this, this building. And he said, Brady Moore said that he had gone out and talked to Mr. Clark and told him he really needed to file that special use request. And a couple more weeks had gone by, and he went and asked him again, because he still hadn't done it. And he would let us know. And he said, "When you have the, when that is filed, then we will send a letter out to people that are within 300 feet, and they can file a letter of objection, and then there will be a hearing, like this hearing." However, we didn't hear from anybody still until December 1st, and then we got the letter from the city that said they are requesting special use. We, nobody on the block got a letter saying, I mean, on the subdivision, no one got a letter saying, "If you object, you have to turn in this objection letter, and then they will hold a hearing." We contacted everybody and nobody got that. We did get the letter saying that there was going to be this meeting, and so, that's where we are now. We're here trying to explain the problems with changing the zoning. And we don't have any objections to the value of the church. We object to the way this was handled, because by the time we got to December 1st, the building is up. It's finished. And they told us that it can, it could be rezoned to single people, but they would have to keep the building up.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Next on the list, I have Joanne York.
Good evening. My name is Joan York. I live at 111 East Red Bud Drive, and I strongly oppose the special use permit request, because it threatens the character, safety, and livability of our residential neighborhood. Our neighborhood is a well-established residential area with single-family homes valued between $300,000 and $500,000. Many were built by the same builder and have a similar brick and earth-tone exteriors. The blue metal building is industrial in appearance and completely out of place among the surrounding homes. Its presence detracts from the aesthetic appeal and curb value of our community. It is an eyesore. Mr. Clark does not live in our neighborhood, and he purchased the husband property for the purpose of hosting a religious youth program, which he has already been operating in a residential zone without an SUP. Furthermore, he has been hearing from concerned neighbors since the lot was cleared, so he knows that a number of us are against the building and its proposed use. But the building still went up. Those of us who actually live in this neighborhood chose it because of its residential character, which this building undermines. Allowing a special use permit for a religious institution or youth childcare, or whatever it is in this space, would set a dangerous precedence precedent for other non-residential structures in residential zones, eroding property values and changing the integrity of neighborhoods like ours. The proposed use of this building for hosting K-12 gatherings will bring increased traffic and parking congestion to our streets. This area was not designed to handle frequent, large gatherings, especially on a regular basis. There are already changes with, or there are already challenges with traffic on North Main and North Husband, and this permit would exacerbate the problem. Simply put, this area does not have infrastructure to support the proposed use without significant disruption. Hosting gatherings for K-12 students will inevitably result in noise, especially during evenings and weekends when we expect peace and quiet. Noise from amplified music, group activities, and drop-offs and pickups will disrupt the tranquility of our neighborhood. This is not about opposing K Life's mission. Their mission is wonderful. It's about ensuring that all special use permits align with the zoning criteria and do not negatively impact the surrounding residents. Noise and traffic are not small concerns, and they directly affect our quality of life. In conclusion, the special use permit should be denied. It does not align with the zoning intent for residential areas. It poses significant risks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. The next one I have on the list is Jacob Longen.
I'm Jacob Longen, 107 Randolph Court. My wife, Jessica, and I own, we didn't receive any communication from the city, which I don't understand, because I'm Barbara's neighbor, so one lot away from the street. Not happy about that, but anyway. Main Street is really the thing I'm concerned about. The traffic is already a problem there. There's zero streetlights anywhere on that street. There are children, there's bus stops. Our son walks down Main Street to his best friend's house, and there's no sidewalk, there's no streetlights. That's not their fault, of course, but an increase in traffic on Main Street is going to happen. And I'm glad to hear that they're gonna cut off the access on Main, but even then, you've still got people who are gonna drop off on Main to have the children walk over, or there's duplexes just to the south of there that has a driveway on the Main Street. There's just no way to not have traffic on Main from that. Husband is one thing, the high school is there, yes, there's activity, but Main is the concern. So, I think that's really all I had.
Thank you. The next name I have on the list is Elaine Akerson.
My name is Elaine Akerson. I live at 113 Randolph Court, so I live next door to Jacob, who just spoke. I'm speaking about the possible additional uses of this building. It is a very large building. You have seen, have seen the picture. I would encourage you to drive along Main Street and look at this building in conjunction with the character of the neighborhood on Randolph Court. It really does stick out. It's a very large blue building. I know they're going to put landscaping, they've talked about fencing. But my concern today, or my question today, is what about other activities? I have spoken to Matt Clark in the past and asked, understand the role of K Life and what K Life would be doing with this building. But he also told me that he might, he didn't have a plan yet, but the building might be made available to selected other groups who would want to have this large facility for an activity that they wish to have. I don't know what that means for us as a neighborhood in terms of noise again, and potentially increased activity, but I think that's a good question to ask. If this is going to be used by entities other than K Life, who might those be? And what, again, would the special permit authorize and allow that to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have on the list is Renee and/or Dawn Rule. Okay.
Hi. My name is Renee Rule, and I live at 1315 North Husband, which is next door and directly north of 1307 North Husband. I know this meeting is not about the benefits of K Life, even though that seems like most of the pros. We're talking about the benefits of K Life. I understand that having, you know, a Christian ministry, a Christian ministry is a beneficial thing, and it is a good thing. But it's not about whether that organization is good or bad. It has to do with, does this building, this brick-and-mortar organization belong in this neighborhood, in this spot? The benefits of their ministry is not being disputed, the location is. I will state that we don't have any negative, my husband and I, we don't have any negative feelings or ill will toward K Life or its ministry. Our issue, however, is being able to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood, which is an older, well-established neighborhood with tree-lined streets, family homes, character and charm. The property at 1307 North Husband sits in the middle of our block, surrounded by single-family and multifamily homes. Our concern with granting the special use permit is that the property will start looking very commercial with the addition of things like signs and parking lots. We've seen their past locations, which were in commercial buildings with large signs out in front. So we have concerns about the resale of our property, property values, not only our home, but those around us. Also, the things that have already occurred on this property have concerned us. The removal of all the trees on the east half of the property and the addition of a large metal industrial shop have been detrimental to the overall aesthetics of our neighborhood. So we have to ask, if the special use permit is granted, what will happen next to damage the character of our neighborhood? Will K Life be able to put up a permanent sign advertising their organization on this property? Would they be allowed to build a church on this property? Would they be allowed to build a parking lot on this property? According to the Stillwater Planning Commission report, quote, "The K Life ministry has begun operating prior to the approval of this SUP." So our question is, if they are already operating without one, why do they need this special use permit? We live next door. There have been activities. And some days, we go outside and there are 20 to 30 cars parked in the front lawn of their property right next to our property.
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. Dawn Rule, did you want to speak?
Dawn Rule, I'm at 1315 North Husband. So, we have, I have a couple of concerns regarding the intended change of usage for that property. One being mostly that, at this point, the staff member said that there was, according to code enforcement, no activities going on over there. Our house sits not facing Husband, actually faces their front lawn, so we see everything walking out our front door, lights shining into our living room. We can see all the activities that happen over there from cars. There were weekends where cars were lined up right in the grass along our property line, I would say all along our connecting property line. They have tried to sell tickets for parking for high school football games. They have had, you guys know, they've had signs out in front. They had four signs out front, advertising K Life. Those signs are down to one now. I've had some in my yard, because they blow away. They land in my yard, they don't come pick them up, they don't pick them up off the street, they leave them. They've had activities going on over there as well. They have them in the mornings, as I mentioned, they have them in the evenings, they have them in the, in the late, not late into midnight, but they'll go to 10:00 PM, 9:00 PM. That will happen on occasion as well. And so, I worry that this, with this, granting of this variance, or this will negatively impact us, because they've already done things against what they said they were going to do. Currently, they're saying we're gonna have at max, you know, five meetings a week and maximum 50 people. We love to have more. Then we just hear 400 people can fit into that building back there. What's going to stop them from continuing to grow this, make it bigger? Now we have 500 people showing up into that building, into that house. That's a lot of people right next door to you, coming in and out. And so, where does it stop at that point? So I don't know with these special use permits, whether they are just over, there's no, they're all or none, or there could be some limitations on what they can do. They can tear down the house and build a church, they can put up a big steeple, they can put a big permanent sign out front. What can they get away with and what can they do? I'm also a little concerned too, because they talked about how we got permits for everything, but I think they built a new deck out front of the house, and there was no permit listed on Stillwater website. They did, I did see the permit for the building out back, but not the permit for the balcony that they put out front. And so, I don't know how that got through as well, unless I missed it on the site, but I did not see a permit for that as well. So again, they're doing things, sort of, they seem to do it first, then ask for forgiveness later, as opposed to asking for permission first and doing it later. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have on this list is Mike Banks.
I'm Mike Banks. I live at 123 Randolph Court. I was one of the developers for Randolph Court. I've been familiar with this property for about 70 years, okay? My grandparents lived at 1203 North Main, which is now, I think, 101 East Randolph Court. I believe in the mission- I believe in the mission for K-Life. I have grandchildren who go to an affiliated organization, Canacut Camps. But I do have concerns with granting the permit at this time. I would like to see a few things for you to wait, to see a few things changed, like there is going to be a transportation problem on North Main. It is a current problem, especially when the high school's there. They have their driveway, they're actively using it at this time, which I would too if I was under construction, building construction. But I would like to see it closed off permanently, meaning the drive being removed, a fence put up, and the landscaping being done. There's been many expressions regarding to the steel structure. It does not fit in the neighborhood. I actually have a steel structure on my property, but no one can see it unless you look north of the Elks Lodge, about three blocks. But the color doesn't fit in very well. There is a blue house on North Main. It's a small house just south of the duplexes that are right around Hartman. I think that's the name of the street. But it doesn't look very aesthetic. So, I mean, that's basically, I would like to see you delay for further discussion at this time. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have on the list is Andrew Doust.
Yeah, hi. Andrew Doust, 120 Randolph Court. So I think, I have to say, I'm a botanist. I kind of like those trees. So I don't think that they were just all rotten assemblage there. So of course, we've already heard that the process seems to be build it first and then ask. So the block was, the black block near North Main was cleared. Building was put on. There was a delay after the foundations for a while, but then the building went up very quickly and now we have the specific use permit. So I'm wondering if that's a normal way that it happens for planning and building of these things? The, my main concern, I think, is that K-Life has this philosophy of you make disciples to make disciples. In other words, it's something that wants to grow. And we've heard already that, you know, projected use right now is small, but I don't think we have any guarantees or limits to what could happen there. I think, you know, the next-door neighbors make very good points about what's already happened that has apparently not supposed to happen. And I feel a place like this needs limits if it's going to survive. I also point out that the metal, that the metal shed is a type of a construction that I know that the council does not like in like in the area to the east of, oh, further south along Main, where you have examples of metal structures, but that particular type of metal structure is seen as not being aesthetic. So it's unaesthetic, it's blue. I agree with Mr. Banks that we should wait at least until we see what the landscaping does because at the moment, what we're seeing is dirt being washed onto the street and also, you know, just a metal structure just in the middle of what is otherwise a brick environment. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I have worked through all of the names on the signup sheet. Well, those were the names on the signup sheet. Is there? I am so sorry. Linda and Keith Good. There you are. It was outside the box. Sorry. I like, I like things in the box.
No, I get it, I get it, I do too.
Sorry about that.
I am Linda Good. I live at 114 Randolph Court. You've met my neighbors. Across the street from Elaine Akerson, next, two doors down from Ron and Linda Clark. I walk, I would just say, Keith and I have lived in Stillwater since 1980. We've been in this home, we were the original owners when it was built in 1994. So we've seen the neighborhood and we've been in that neighborhood and we love that neighborhood, honestly. Except now, I walk out, when I walk my dog and I go out my front door, I look to my right and I see a big, blue industrial building, as you've heard. It is not aesthetic, it's really quite displeasing. And again, the mission of K-Life, I have no problem with that, would support it, but it really, this just doesn't belong in our neighborhood. It's just, it's not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood, is the wording I would use. So I would ask that you recommend not, that you not recommend approval at the city council. One concern that has not, a lot of, we all have a lot of the same concerns, obviously. One of the concerns that's not been, I'd like to throw out, is parking on Main. Parking is still allowed on Main. The traffic is an issue, especially with kids walking and you've got cars parked. We've had semis parked along Main before. And there's no signs about parking. And the very first one is at the corner of Ron and Linda's house, which is on the corner of Randolph and Main. And there it is, there's no parking there Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. That's directly across the street from the Blue Barn. And so my request would be that if, in fact, you continue, if you table this, that you might look at, could we change and make there no parking at all on North Main? That would be so much safer, in my opinion. And I just want to say, I would, you know, I understand that, I, well, it was surprising to think a lot of us that the city would allow someone to construct a 3,200-square-foot building in their backyard, which is basically what has happened, in my understanding. We have a shed in our backyard. It is painted, it matches our house. We've had no complaints about it, it's not nearly that big. But it's disappointing to me that the city, I know this is not your whole thing, but let me finish. It's disappointing to me that the city allows this kind of thing to happen, honestly. I do think in this case, it was a lot of a, let's do this and ask, you know, first and then ask forgiveness later. We were, we started asking questions with the city in early September. And yet, and Mr. Clark knew that and yet the building did go up in anticipation of, I suppose, getting the permit.
Thank you.
I would be Keith Good. 114 Randolph Court.
Thank you.
East Randolph Court. There's no West Randolph Court. So I'd like to amplify upon what Linda said. I agree with everything she said and what my neighbors have said. Things that I would try to draw your attention to. I hope you're all aware of the city noise ordinance. It's quite strict. Okay? Now, we understand that this 3,200-square-foot building has no HVAC. Therefore, in the spring, when it's uncomfortable, those 13-foot doors have got to come open to make the building livable, especially if it's raining. There won't be any cover. And so I anticipate noise will, in fact, be a problem. And it will be something that the Stillwater police are going to have to address through noise control, if you will. Now, the other thing I'd tell you is, yes, we're not that far from the football stadium and is there noise from it? By golly, we can hear every call. It's that clear. Okay? So again, agreeing with the mission of K-Life, but hearing that there might be meetings after the games? Well, that's a little disturbing. Because that just tells me the noise is going to last longer and that neighbors are going to have to complain. When noise is a problem, the police are going to have to come. It's going to have to be taken care of. All of you, I would encourage you to drive up North Main tonight. It's a black tunnel. Okay? There is essentially no lighting in that particular area. It's very dark. It is scary. You don't even want to go the speed limit that's not well enforced. You want to go down to 5 or 10 miles an hour in case a person might step outside or around a car and you don't want to run over them. Right? And so I agree with my wife. There ought to be no parking through there and somehow visibility ought to be increased if you approve this. There's some real problems there. So, you know, I think there will be noise in addition to these after-game parties that will come from the special use activities after school and this sort of thing. I don't know how you put 50 students in a small building with open doors
Thank you, sir.
and be within the noise limits. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Okay. I now think we have gotten everyone on the signup sheet. Is there anyone we've missed? Okay. Then, so now we have time for, yeah, I'd like to have staff come and answer some of the questions first. And we'll close the public hearing to have the questions.
Okay. I think the main one that needs to be-
Legal's advising me to make sure I'm doing this the right way.
Okay. So the main thing that I hear, Jackie Porter, city planner for this item. The main item that I hear tonight is the concerns of them not being noticed about the building. So the city received an accessory, a residential accessory structure permit stated as a barn. There is nothing else. Anybody can build an accessory structure on their property. So it was reviewed as such. It was not until later, to the point where a neighbor said this is what they are saying that they're going to do with it, we can't do anything based on hearsay.
Jackie, I have a question. And I'm going to try not to interrupt you too much, but I have lots of questions as well as we've kind of gotten through this process. So, and I know we'll get this in a minute, so we can kind of go back and check on this later. But is there anything in our permitting process or our building code that states that an accessory use should be smaller than the main use in square footage?
No, we do not. The only thing that states for a residential accessory, anything, it just can't be taller than the primary structure.
Taller than, okay, very good. Thank you for helping me.
As well as the facade. So there are no regulations on the facade.
Okay. That's another one.
If you take out the use of their intended use of the building, the building is permitted as it is built on this property currently. If they were going to just live in the residence as a residential home, this building isn't compliant. Taking out the use of what they're intending.
Right, yeah, for what the city knew at the time that the building permit was-
Yes.
-applied for and granted.
Even if you deny the use, it does not get rid of the structure itself. The structure will stay.
So still on the subject of the permit. So I know we have setbacks and the building as it is constructed meets all of the setbacks that the city has.
And exceeds.
Okay. That was another one I had. Okay. And you did mention we do not have any guidance for this area of town for aesthetics, correct?
Correct.
If I may on that, the commissioners can recommend conditions be placed on this SUP, which includes landscaping, parking, all of those issues.
Thank you. I have that note down here further on my page.
I thought you would.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'm sorry, sir, we're going to go through this portion. Not, not, not at this point, sir. Okay, so we talked about how the, can you talk about the notification? Jackie, as well, how that radius goes out and who receives notification? And I'll preface that with a building permit that meets all the criteria does not require a notice to the neighbors. It's when the SUP was filed, that's what triggers the notification to the neighbors? And if you could explain how that process works?
Yes, okay. So with the specific use, once we became, knowledge that it was an SUP needed, they noticed when we proceeded with the SUP process. We noticed within 300 feet of the property. So there's a buffer around it. So you have a property line and then it's just 300 feet within. So anything that's touching that 300 buffer, those property owners would get notified of this, of the specific use permit.
And it's, and it's smaller than you would think. It's smaller than you would think when we look at some of these that come to us. So maybe, that may be why one neighbor received a letter and another did not. It's that radius as it comes from the property line.
Correct.
All right. What else did we have on the list? We're keeping up here?
The commission, someone did speak about prohibiting parking on Main Street, I believe. That is outside the scope of this commissioner's authority. You can regulate and put conditions on parking on the property, but not on the Main Streets. That would be go through the city department.
So if there was, if the neighbors are concerned about parking on the street, there is a process that they could go to the city and ask for parking on one side or no parking on one side or no parking on either side? So it's a different process than we can address this evening?
Correct.
But parking on, on the property, we can consider in our deliberation?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have a couple other questions for staff. The use, the use that we're talking about this evening, in my mind, this appears to be a commercial use for the assembly of religious activities. The building that's there is currently permitted as an accessory use, so it would have to be re-permitted for this use. When that's re-permitted, would it require-
This is the permit process for to change the use?
To change the use?
Yes.
So through this process, then, if this is now a commercial use, this building, as I understand it, does not have any HVAC and does not have any toilets?
It's not being permitted as commercial use, it's being permitted for religious institution purposes.
So for religious and institutional purposes, it would be an assembly occupancy? Per the building code?
I could not answer that right now. I have to look that up.
It is reviewed as, it was applied for as a necessary structure.
Okay, but if, but if this, if this changes the use of the building, then it's no longer an accessory. It is, it is, then it then becomes an assembly use? Per the building code?
I believe so.
Yes. So I believe then, and I would need to go back and look at the code and if nobody here can answer, and I cannot answer off without looking in the code book because I don't have it-
Same.
-in my pocket. But I believe that we're also talking about there would be a requirement for toilets. There would be a requirement for air exchanges. I believe there would be requirements for some energy code compliance as well. So I believe there's some additional information that we may need to look at this further. I would also like to know if staff could tell us, based on the 3,200 square feet, and I was being generous as I was doing my calcs. Over here, I was doing my calculations on standing room. I think you were doing yours on seated. I was, I was coming up with 220 people. But if we were doing worst-case scenario of 400, how many parking spaces would that require? Per city, per city parking ordinance? And I understand that this body is the one that can say a recommendation of how many parking spaces, but I just want to know how many parking spaces we're talking? So on assembly, is it still three occupants per car? It's been a day or two since I've-
I know.
Since I've filed for any kind of building permit in City of Stillwater?
I just had the code up, so give me a second.
Staff can be happy to research those questions.
Okay, so those are, those are questions I think I'd like to get some answers on.
I will state that the permit did show that there were our toilets in the restroom facilities.
There are toilets, but there's no heat?
Yep. But again, it was being reviewed as a residential structure as applied for. And building code was reviewing it as such. And they don't need a CO for accessory structures.
So some of the other questions that were asked this evening, and this is a question I had already made a note when I was reading through the packet, is does the SUP, if it is granted, would it cover only the existing structures or would it cover any other development? Or would it cover any other development on the property?
The whole property?
The whole property. So if we, if we grant an S U P, the whole property could be used for religious activity and they could, they could demo structures and put new structures in?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I've got on my notes right now. I'm sorry, commissioners, I've kind of just been, um, hugging the mic here. Anybody have other questions?
When does an S U P come for renewal?
Annually. We do, they don't come back to you, though.
Right.
It's just annually done.
What's, what's the process?
Until ownership changes or the use changes, the S U P is valid.
Oh, sorry, yes, she's correct. I'm trying to find the parking.
It's not, it's not, it's not an annual.
No, it's just, it, it's.
We, they are supposed to renew annually, um, to us. So the permit is as a permit, it is renewed like a liquor license or such, it is renewed annually.
It does not come back to the commission for approval annually. It would only come back if the ownership changed or the use changed.
So it would be an administrative renewal annually? And it would remain, I would guess, unless you had some kind of complaint to rehear it?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, what I was looking for is some of the concerns that the neighbors have. Is there a place to kind of insert their complaints into a process? If, if they have fears today of things that might happen and they do happen, it doesn't sound like there's a.
I think the question is, can the S U P be revoked? Is that the question?
Well, if it came up for natural renewal annually, then that'd be the place, right? But it doesn't do that, so.
That's something I would have to research for you.
And any concerns, is like with any nuisance, you would report it to P D and go down that route?
Oh, um, I think there was another, sorry to have another one here, and that was the question about the noise complaint. I believe we have been able to ascertain that there is an exemption in the noise code ordinance that churches are exempt from noise ordinance.
That's correct. And to answer your parking, we do not have an assembly. We have an auditorium, which would be the closest, and it's one space per six seats, or nine linear feet of fixed bench, or 45, or a space per 45 square feet of floor.
Okay. Yeah, is auditorium falls into an assembly occupancy?
Yep, but, yeah, that's the closest I can find.
Okay. So it'd be six, says six per. Are there other, other questions? I'm going to do some more calculations. So on my 220, I'm getting 36-ish parking spots. Um, and then if that parking, if it were required to be, is there anything in code? Or would it, again, fall to this body to make, um, recommendations? Would it have to be a hardscape or could it be a gravel? Parking, so the parking improvements, the parking, so if we'd have to, if we'd require that there was permanent parking for 36 cars on there, just to throw a number out?
Are you asking, is the current requirement that they pay?
Is the current requirement that it would have to be paved?
Jackie, can you answer that? It sounds like we'd have to research that for you.
Okay, research that one as well. And then, uh, along with that, if it does have to be, then I think we need to be looking at the total lot coverages to see if the, then, we then have to look at any kind of runoff mitigation or drainage for that kind of development?
If it exceeds a certain.
If it exceeds a percentage of the lot size, right? So I think, I think these, these are all things that I would like to know before granting this use. I know we're not at this part yet, but to me, there's, there's, there's a, this is leaning a lot towards a commercial use, is what this S U P is asking for. And I understand it's not, it's, it's a religious use in a residential area. But the fact of the matter is the day to day comings and goings and where we would be with life safety code with this number of people in a structure begins to fall into a lot of other need that, um, becomes a lot more, um, involved.
If I may recap through the questions, so staff can do the research for you. Um, if there's a revocable process for the S U P, occupancy permit changes because, due to the assembly, and paid parking is going to be required now, or can it be a condition? And look into the drainage issues based upon the size of the building and their lot.
Right, and I think all the other associated requirements, if a permit's required to change the occupancy for the use, use and occupancy change?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Just a question, is there a differentiation between institutional and commercial use in an S U P?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, commercial, perhaps, is that defined as something generating income or cash flow? Institutional could be something that would be nonprofit, religious, or whatever?
I believe the code refers to religious, um, institution, but I would have to pull that up for you exactly, but there is a difference.
Okay.
There is a.
I think they would like to add that to the list of things we'd like to hear about.
Okay, well, you can add that to the report, so you can see the definitions of both.
Any other questions for staff or items we'd like additional information on from staff? All right, um, call the applicant forward now?
Yes, you may.
Okay, um, thank you. The applicant come forward? And if you could respond to some of the questions that have been posed?
Yeah, let me, let me pull up my notes here. Uh, I think first and foremost, um, I appreciate due diligence processes, right? They're here for a reason, and we, uh, we fully expect that those processes will be followed, much like we have chosen to follow all of those. I think the first thing that I would just say is, this was a publicly available for sale property twice within 2024. Once it went to auction and once it was listed, uh, for anybody to purchase. When my wife and I chose to purchase this, we saw it as an opportunity to potentially move our family there. We saw it as an opportunity to do a number of different things. And as we sought, uh, the building expansion, we followed every letter to the law. Uh, we submitted every application that was required. Um, in terms of submitting for a sup, um, you, you must have a building or you must have a property first purchased before you can submit a sup, right? We cannot submit a, a special use permit for a property we do not own, right? So we first must own the property. Uh, I think the second thing is, a lot of the things that, uh, the community has, you know, expressed concerns about are things that, um, I questioned in my own neighborhood. I own a residential property that sits on a corner lot that has a lot of traffic. It has a lot of kids running in it. I question whether sometimes people are hosting a OSU college football watch party that interferes with my traffic flow. But every time that I drive up and down my street, I make sure that every one of them are legally parked on roads that you guys protect to ensure that us as citizens are safe every time we enter and leave our property and we drive up and down our streets. The building in and of itself, I recognize that it may not be the color someone wanted it to be or the material, uh, but we chose this building for a very specific reason. It is the closest color to match the color of the house. And so as you look at the blue of our existing property, uh, the home that was there, we tried to match that color as much as we could. Uh, in terms of all the things that are required, um, this as a special use permit for religious purpose, um, we've done everything we can to make sure that we've addressed the items that would be a necessity, which are things like proper airflow, fire resistant materials, toilets, water, all the things that are required for this, this specific use to be approved. I know everybody's talked about, uh, in, in specific, um, someone had mentioned something about additional use. The conversation that we had during our open house was to talk about how this property may be used in the future. The context of my comment was, this is a community property. What I offered was, if someone wanted to use our property to host their family gathering for Christmas or for Thanksgiving, or if they wanted to have their daughter's wedding reception there, we offered this neighbor the property to use. That was the context in terms of what we may use it for in the future or not. Uh, this building is going to be a building that we hope engages the community and invites others into it. Uh, and so I, I did just think it was quite interesting that that is how that context was turned. In terms of traffic flow, we recognize and we have firsthand witnessed that Main Street is a concern, right? There are people that use Main Street as a shortcut to bypass the challenging intersection of McElroy and Western. Uh, we ourself have tried to flag down people speeding down the street as we have been there, making sure they understand that they are in a neighborhood residential home, uh, area. That is not things that we are inducing. Those are not things that are new to us as property owners, nor are they new to the use of what we intend with this up application. I think in addition, um, Main Street, it being a concern, we have clearly addressed that by the expansion of our driveway off of husband to ensure that there is proper in and out access and safety. But more importantly, we have clearly communicated to the neighbors during our open house that we plan to shut off access to Red Bud and Main Street. First, that will be done by closing off the driveway, the driveway, uh, through the installation of landscaping and other materials. But in addition, we will have a fully fenced, closed section of the property on the east side. We will also have a fenced and closed section to the south. The section that connects our new building structure to the middle of our property will have an extended fence that's placed there to ensure that no one has access to drive onto the duplex driveway and drop their child off. There will be no access for anyone to get there, nor will there be access for anyone to park on Main Street and access our property. I cannot prevent someone from climbing a fence. I cannot prevent someone from parking on a street. Uh, but one thing that we do have, uh, K Life is very diligent in their safety protocols. They do have a clear communication channel with each of their parents and each of their staff members that will demonstrate what our expectations are, both from accessing the property as well as what they do on the property, meaning where they park, where they drive, where they pick up, and where they drop off. I wish I could do more to change, uh, what people's perspective is about an approved building that followed every legal aspect that the city asked of us when we built that building. I do not question people's concerns about the future. But I do guarantee you that both from a property owner perspective, we will ensure we hold K Life or anyone else that uses this property accountable. But I can guarantee you that K Life itself will hold, uh, anyone that is operating in their behalf accountable to every other law that is set in stone by the city and the community and the county, the state, everyone. If at any moment any neighbor has a concern, they have a process that they can go through to file those complaints. Uh, we will be more than happy to make sure that we are adhering to everything that is set forth to keep the city safe, uh, to keep the community vibrant, um, and to follow all the rules. And so, uh, there's a number of things I, I, I can't address, right? Um, I don't know the exact number of hardscape allowed per square foot. Uh, it's a 1.8 acre lot. Everything we've done in terms of the building size we built was specifically built based on the size of the existing property to ensure that we stayed within code. Uh, we have specifically not added any hardscape because we do not want to break, um, any sort of drainage issue or hardscape related to the amount of concrete that you can put, uh, per square foot that is available. Everything we, we've done has been within intention to make sure that we follow the rules. I know at one point, someone had made a comment to us the last few weeks, well, what, what happens when you sell this property? I wish I knew what's going to happen to every property I own and when I sell it and who comes in and moves next to me. As a matter of fact, uh, there's times where I love and there's times where I don't love the neighbors that I have. I don't get to pick that. I don't get to pick who buys the home next to me unless I choose to buy it or someone else does. All I can say is that we've done everything within what the city has asked. We've done everything within what the community has asked, and we've done everything legally that we know to make sure that we are following all the rules. We commit now verbally on this recording, uh, to be a great neighbor. Uh, we commit to be a great landlord. Uh, we commit that as long as K Life were to operate within this special use permit, that they're going to do so in a way that we feel, uh, is respectful and thoughtful and loyal to what this neighborhood and this community is. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you guys may have.
Will there be a fence between your property and the rules property to the north?
Uh, yeah.
I don't even know.
There, there, uh, I actually don't know exactly where their property line starts and ends. There's a number of properties that are to the north of us. Most of the property to the north, uh, already has a fence there. So everywhere from the existing house, um, to the Inselman's property line, then back to the south, then back to the east, that all is fenced today. Um, if there's additional fencing that the rules or would like for us to discuss, making sure that we have, uh, we have talked with the neighbors and frankly, some, one of the neighbors even provided us an example of a really great looking fence that she would like for us to consider, which we have received and reviewed. And we'll make sure that we don't act out of, um, sort of what's existing there, right? We'll keep consistency, uh, with what is installed or what's within the community. So, um, we're happy to review that and talk with the rules and make sure that they feel safe about where we do or don't have fencing. But most of it today on the, the north side already has fence.
How tall do you think, I mean, maybe you can't answer this, but the fence, you know, the view, people have, uh, been concerned about the view off Main, the blue building and so forth. So how tall do you think that fence, so do you have a plan for that? Because it, it would hide a lot of it.
Yeah, yeah, so there, there is actually, um, a considerable drop, um, from the building itself down to Red Bud, right? So we, we don't plan to address that with the fence. We plan to address that with landscaping. And so our intention is to come back with the entire eastern side of the property, north to south from our property line within, um, the access, uh, of the setback line. Uh, we intend to bring very tall, mature, over time landscaping that will hide most of the building. So you can think things like evergreens, you can think of crepe myrtles, you can think of trees that we believe will not inhabit, um, additional properties next to us. Uh, but, uh, we, during our open house, we actually talked with the neighbors and presented the idea of having a collective neighborhood conversation about what they would like for that to look like, right? I think one of the things that was really refreshing, uh, as we've been working on the property is to see the number of neighbors that walked this property and that walk their streets. We would want, you know, we wouldn't be any happier, uh, if they would be a part of that process with us. We would invite all of them in. If there's a certain color, if there's a certain tree, if there's a certain view that they would like obstructed, we have every intention of, of trying to resolve that over time. So we don't expect a fence to fix necessarily a 17-foot peak on a, on a building. Um, but we do intend to have very mature trees go back that over time will end up minimizing a lot of what you see from Main Street looking back to the west. Uh, I would suspect that, you know, within a number of years, y- you won't necessarily see much of what the building is itself based on the landscaping we put back.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Um, you mentioned you plan to close the drive. And is there, is the drive that accesses this off of Main Street? Is it the one that also accesses the duplexes?
It is not, no. We actually have a, uh, a driveway cut between us and the Inselman's property to the north.
Okay.
So it's on the north side of our section.
Okay.
It hasn't been used for a number of years. Um, the only reason it's been used in the near term is because of construction access, right? Uh, and so, um, we will be closing that off and putting a, a fence that separates us in the, um, from the Inselman's fence line, property line and our existing building structure. We will have a, a fence that goes there.
And then you, do you plan to re, to remove that curb cut, remove the drive, or?
Uh, I don't think we plan to. I mean, um, there's a very small curb cut there, right? There has not ever been a hardscape that's been poured, um, that has been a, a rock. So we plan to essentially landscape all the way up to that curb. Um, and so there's about three feet of concrete, there's really not much. Um, so we're just going to completely incorporate that within the landscaping projections, uh, that we have. And I will say, mo- most of what we're going to be doing on the property itself is going to be art. to be artificial grass. We've already talked with the Inselman's, they're, you know, they see it when they look outside their property, but we will be putting artificial grass in a portion of that to ensure that we have not only a good aesthetics, but that we have really great water runoff and water retention is properly handled. And so we'll be ensuring that we grade everything appropriately as our, our application says with the city, but the artificial grass will go in a, a section of that area right out in front between us and the Inselman's to the north.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
I have one other question for staff. We may have to add this to the list. So the, the other question I have, so the portion of the property that fronts husband is zoned RSS, this portion where this building has been built that I'll say fronts on Main is zoned RT, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Does the different zoning, is there any requirement that the zoning has to have frontage to front on Main, or can it have frontage? Can it, because this is under, this is on one ownership right now.
Correct.
Does it need to have, does it have to have any kind of access?
I don't know if I can answer the list.
Okay, we could add that to the list.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any requirement in our code that requires them to have that secondary frontage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is either, but I'd like for us to look into that, make sure. Okay. All right. Okay, I think we're at that portion where we'd like to hear alternatives from staff and findings.
All right. The findings are that the Land Development Code allows for churches and other religious institutions in the RSS and RT zoning districts with a specific use permit, and that the comprehensive plan calls for low-density residential uses at the property's location. Your alternatives for this item are to accept the findings and recommend that city council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented, find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the request, or find that additional information and discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Thank you. Anybody formulating a motion?
I think that we have a good list of questions that we'd like answered from staff and legal, so I would motion to find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to the January-
Seventh.
-seventh meeting of Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes four, oh, four and one against. Too many pieces of paper, I've lost my agenda up here. The next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion or possible action.
None.
Okay. The one item that we do have listed is our next regular meeting, as has been noted, is January 7th. And the last item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. We shall now vote. Motion passes five zero. We're now adjourned.